I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. I'd invite you all to rise and join in the fledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and a dollar, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fellas, can we have roll call?
Kim Coyer.
Here.
Craig Cookshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fuller.
Here.
Wiley Ferrell.
Here. Thank you. You've all emailed a copy of our minutes from our December 4th meeting. I'd look for a motion to either approve or amend those minutes.
So moved.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes from December 4th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, first thing on the agenda this evening is a public hearing, so we're looking for a motion to suspend the council meeting and open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second, have a motion and a second to suspend the council meeting and open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Fellas, as we begin the public hearing, do you have an advertisement that we posted this?
Yeah.
Like to make that a matter of record?
So moved.
Second, motion and a second to make the notice of the hearing a matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, so this is a public hearing in reference to a possible sale of the Decatur Casting property at 822 Dayton Avenue. And Keith Gerber is here this evening. He has made the city an offer on the property of $35,000. And his business that he has, Hoosier Pattern, borders it to the north, and it would be for future expansion and development of his business. Yeah, you can see it there on the TV screen, the property itself. From the very far north, the white buildings, that's Keith's current existing business. So is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment or have any questions while we're in a public hearing? Any comments from council, media, department heads? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing and reconvene the city council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing and reconvene the council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Tim, I'm gonna let you take it from here, if you would, to open discussion about the offer that Mr. Gerber's made us.
Okay.
If we want to accept the offer, if we want to have any contingencies to that offer, et cetera.
Right. The property was first determined by the city to be surplus property. The city authorized the sale of the property through a bid process that required getting two appraisals. And once that was done, then we advertised a window for bids to be submitted, and we could accept a bid for at least 90 percent or more of the average of the two appraisals. And I don't know, fellas, do you have the average of that?
Of the appraisals?
Yeah. We did not receive any offers for at least 90 percent of the appraised, average of the appraised value.
I have it here. The average of the two appraisals was $81,920. One appraisal was $110,000, the other was $53,840. Average was $81,920.
Okay, so $81,920 was, we could have accepted outright at any point in that bid window, a bid that was at least 90 percent of the bid, or the average of the two appraisals. We did not receive that. However, we did receive the offer from Hoosier Pattern. The offer was for $35,000. That's obviously below 90 percent of the average of the two appraisals. Under the statute, we're required to then hold a second public hearing to obtain comment from the public regarding whether to accept or reject the offer that was received. We just had that public hearing, there was no public comment. So at this point, it's up to council to make a determination of whether it wishes to accept the offer as presented. Keith's offer is subject to a survey being done at the city's expense, showing no encroachments. Hoosier Pattern are receiving a comfort letter from IDEM. Us providing good title through a warranty deed and title insurance, and entering into a purchase agreement that ultimately the terms are acceptable both to the city and to Hoosier Pattern. So, and Keith indicated that the offer would be good for 30 days. We're frankly beyond that period, but Keith agreed to extend it to allow us to go through the statutory process of having the public hearing and then having council to consider this. Whatever decision council makes, you, the statute suggests or requires that you identify the reasons for your decision. So what I did is I prepared a resolution that basically says that the resolution is either to accept or reject the offer, and it would be done for the reasons set forth in Exhibit A. So as you discuss this, I'll make some notes, and then you tell me what reasons you are relying upon in either approving the offer or rejecting it. The second thing would be in Exhibit B, are you tying any conditions to the sale at that price? So it could be that, whatever those conditions, it could be that if there's no development within a certain time, you'd have either first right of refusal or an option to buy the property back. You know, it could be whatever you feel are appropriate conditions that should be tied to selling the property if you choose to sell it at the price it's been offered. You know, if you reject the offer, then you can continue to keep the property for sale. You can list it, or you can sell it at a public auction. So those are your choices, should you choose to reject it. There's nothing to say that there couldn't be further negotiations with Hoosier Pattern or others that might be interested in the property if you did reject the current offer.
I have one question.
Yes.
I remember wanting to court with you
Yes.
about the title switch
Yep.
of this property.
Yep.
Is there, was there any, do we receive as a city any payment for any consideration on that property? Not that he's purchasing, but in that entire site?
Okay.
Do we receive consideration as a city for that?
Yeah, well, not with regard to the quiet title action. With regard to the demolition, there was recoupment of some of the expenses that the city put up to take down the building initially. The cost of that was about $106,000. The county contributed $36,000, the city the balance. I'm using rough figures, those may not be correct to the dollar, but it's in that area. And then there was a sale or perpetual lease of the cell tower that's on this property. And there was $30,000 payments over a three-year period. The county received the first payment, and the city received the second too, to partially reimburse both entities for the upfront costs that they incurred to take the building down. So there is an agreement with the county that once the property is sold, then selling expenses are to be deducted from the gross sale proceeds and reimburse the city for those. And then any remediation costs that were incurred by the county and the city are to be reimbursed if there are sufficient funds to do it. If there are not sufficient funds, then it's reimbursed on a prorated basis. If there are excess funds after reimbursement has been made, then that gets split 50-50 between the city and the county. So to answer your question, Craig, with regard to the quiet title action, I went through and calculated the costs that have been incurred. With regard to that, there were attorney fees of $1,566. There were advanced court costs, legal notices, and a guardian ad litem that you have to have in a quiet title action to protect the interest of anybody that was sued. And so those expenses were paid by the city and have not been reimbursed. Since then, in order to go through the bid process to put the property up for sale, we had to get through two appraisals. Those were $500 each, so that's another $1,000. We had to advertise that we were taking bids. That was $105.23. The additional costs that we're looking at to sell it would be the survey bill, I checked with Brent Miller about that. That cost is gonna be somewhere between $900 and $1,300, according to what Brent shared with me. And then we would have normal real estate selling expenses. You're gonna have legal document preparation fees. You're gonna have title insurance. You're gonna have closing expenses. So that's gonna be another $800 to $1,000. In addition to that, so those are selling expenses that would come out of the gross sale proceeds initially. Then from that, the city has calculated what its costs were for remediation. And those figures, I think, came from Jeremy and the mayor. But we had rented an excavator. There was costs related to the rental of that, the moving that in and out of the site. There were repairs to that while it was on-site. There's been hauling of concrete, trucking and man-hours related to that. There's hauling of dirt in, including trucking and man-hours to bring the dirt back in, rough grade it and seed it. There's mowing expenses attributed to this as well. But the long and the short of it is, the remediation costs that the city's incurred total somewhere in excess of $63,000. If you include the mowing element as part of the remediation, so...
And if you include the legal fees and the...
That's another roughly $5,000. So the total, the sale expenses come out the top. But then the remediation costs, we would have to get a figure from the county to see, I think, what happened there. Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that the highway department provided some drivers and trucking as part of the removal of the material initially, but I don't know how much was done. And Kim, I don't know if...
The county has a lot of expenses as well.
Yeah.
I don't know what the exact hours they...
Yeah.
I felt it started down and it was man-hating there in the beginning. It went on for several months before I was involved with it. And then in January 2008 is when I fully involved with it. A lot of what happened on the interior, the whole section of the debris and stuff was in 2007, so I'm not 100% sure of what was all involved.
Yeah.
One mark was still super bad, like marking and tagging. But then after that, highway...
Someone sell that, or did we get $60,000 out of that two block? What was that?
We got, yeah. The cell tower, to take down the building and remove it, the cost of that was, like I said, it was over $106,000, something like that. I think that the county contributed $36,000, and the city paid the difference. And of that, the county was reimbursed $30,000 from the first year of the sale of the cell tower, the lease of it. And then the city was reimbursed $60,000. But those expenses were related to the removal of the building. The agreement for sharing of remediation costs didn't include that. That's a separate item. So that would be related to the removal of the concrete, and then bringing in the dirt and leveling it so that the site could be reused by a prospective purchaser.
So these are all unreimbursed expenses to this point?
So you're saying that this was an additional $63,000?
Over and above what was paid for.
Was already generated.
Yes.
With the lease of the tower?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Tim, I found, today I found this over on the Decatur Casting cleanup, and it did have Hank Mayer submitted something to Adams County Economic Development.
Right.
It has all the equipment and man-hours that this...
Well, yeah, this is very detailed in terms of, but it's showing that this was done by the sideways district.
Yes.
When the recycling that was stored there, when they, when it was determined who that originally belonged to, that she had stored, and then Matt went back to that company, and they had to pay, I believe, pay part of that
They did.
cleanup, solid waste, because they processed that waste again. They had, you know, they were not, they had to recycle through her, but they were the original creator of it.
Correct.
That was part of it, and '07 was to identify whose original waste that was, and that process. I think that's where Hank, we were involved in that a little bit, and Hank was involved in that.
Well, I think, kind of the bottom line is, you know, both the city and the county incurred a lot of expenses over and above the remediation costs over the years. The issue at hand is, we have an offer on the table for $35,000 to a very good local business person that's been good with the city. And do we want to accept his offer of $35,000? Do we want to counteroffer him? Or what do we intend to do going forward here? So, let's discuss this, guys.
First of all, the reason I brought it up is because I thought there was some more money on the table with the tower lease, and I thought that that would offset...
That's all.
He's saying, that's what I wanted for clarity in the first place.
Correct.
Number two, Keith, your plans, as you discussed last time we had a city council meeting that you attended, which was last time, two weeks ago. That in the beginning, you want to basically create a better opportunity for you to back in trucks?
Yeah, it's for, yeah, around about, for trucks entering off of 103 North.
And for future expansion, if that works?
That's correct.
I look at these numbers here, and what sticks out to me is we've sent a mowing crew out, we're guessing 96 times.
That's strictly a guess.
Yep.
At a big cost. Here we are 10 years later. Finally, we're at a point where we can move forward with this property. And I'm excited that Mr. Gerber and his company stepped up and wants to make something happen there. That's my feeling.
I would agree. I would agree. I do, would like to see, though, a contingency, a right of first refusal in that contract, that, or that if...
If not developed within a certain period of time.
That we, yeah, would have an opportunity.
I'm not sure if it's a matter of giving, putting stipulations on development, but I think if he's gonna be able to sell it, then we would get first right of refusal for the price that we sold it to him now.
Right. That's what I...
So that way...
That's protection agency.
After the discussion, they really didn't give you a clean board of health with IDEM on it. I know there's some risk on your part also, Keith. And we haven't really had any other offers on the table. After discussing this with Craig Russett on the Board of Zoning Appeals, we talked like this, and if you think this would be fair. If the city, because you're a good business owner and has always done good, positive things for our community, if we were to give you this opportunity to purchase this ground at a discounted price, in the future, if you choose to develop, and if you would not ask for abatement on the actual property, the land, if you, because we've given you the consideration of the discounted price, in my opinion. But if you were to put machinery and other things that are not part of the land in there, I would feel, that would be fine. Because you're just growing the business. But, you know, to ask for, you know, the abatement for the actual land, do you agree with that?
I agree with that. I wouldn't, I mean, if we, if we were gonna put a, you know, sizable building on this, I would look to for a tax evasion on that and any machinery, if it goes into the building, but not a tax evasion on the land.
Okay. Well, now, wait a minute. That's, the building would...
The building becomes, the building becomes part of the land.
Yeah.
Except, yeah, machinery would be separate.
Right. Yeah. There's real estate which would include the building, and then there's the personal property, all the equipment.
I mean, you know, we spent a lot of money on industrial parks. We put money into the infrastructure, developing those, not because we're looking to make money off of the property.
Right.
Because we're trying to attract businesses.
Correct.
So I never looked at this as from a perspective of, hey, we're trying to be in the real estate business and make money off the real estate. I think it'd be great if we could cover our costs. Obviously, we're, I think we're off on that. I understand what you're saying about, though, about the mowing. We're still gonna be stuck with that, moving forward.
Not if we sell it.
Well, yeah. I knew we had some expenses, and I just didn't realize it was...
And then again, like I said, I bet the county can probably just about match this, with all their expenses, because they had their county highway trucks hauling stuff in and out also.
That property's not been good for the city or the county.
No, it hasn't.
It's time to let someone else have the brunt.
I agree. I just wanted to share that with you, see your feelings. But I guess the building would be tied to it.
If you're gonna invest in...
I think Hoosier Pattern would be positive for our community of them owning that.
So the only thing I've heard that we might want to do is if Keith would ever want to sell the property, that the city would get first right of refusal to buy it back at the same price that we would sell it to him? Are there any other...
I'd be on board with that. I think it would only be fair. I don't know if putting a stipulation on abatement on the real estate right now is an important deal. I mean, I would assume, we're not, we might not all be sitting here if abatement ever came through.
That's true.
But they're gonna be aware that this property got sold at a discounted rate, and I assume they could make that decision at that point. But I think the city really needs to protect themselves. I'm not saying that Keith's gonna resell it, but...
Anything's possible.
I think it's, that's just an important safeguard to have.
Yep. Are there any other contingencies or options, or Keith, do you have anything that you would like to bring out?
You know, I just, you know, I just don't want to be landlocked.
Yep.
I just don't know, I mean, I spent a lot of money this year, so...
Department heads have any comments?
What's the next step?
Tim, would we look for a motion to either accept or deny the bid? Is that what we would look for next?
Yeah, and I guess, one of the reasons, if you're leaning towards accepting the bid, is that the property has been vacant for some time. We only received one bid. Keith is a good corporate citizen.
He's a good citizen, he's got a good track record.
And the prospect of redevelopment are all reasons that you're looking.
Not by the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. So having said that...
Do you have any reason to get an opinion from the county, or someone?
Yeah, Kim, do you have any comments that you'd like to make? I know that you're...
I'd like to say yes.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Yeah. I think we're all in the same boat with that, you know, it's...
Keith, do you have any problem with a first right of refusal if you choose to sell?
Okay. I'd look for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. State it. The entire motion.
I'll make the motion that we accept his
Offer.
Offer $35,000 with the contingency of first right of refusal.
Should he...
Should he choose to sell the property.
I'll second that. Thank you. Is there any discussion before we go to the vote?
Do you need more information for reading why, Ben?
Um, I'm trying to get these down real quick. Can I just wait on you?
I think it'd be wise for us to listen to what he has to say before we vote, don't you think?
Well, these are just the reasons as to why we're accepting...
We have to justify it.
Good corporate citizenship.
We don't want to be...
So we don't landlock him for the expansion of his business? And to relieve the city of liability and maintenance of the property. Is that pretty fair?
Mm-hmm.
Insure, insure it? Is that enough?
I'm just trying to get them down.
So we have a motion and a second. If we vote in favor of this, then the next thing we would do would be introduce this resolution? Is that right?
Basically, what you would do is, you would, you introduce, or what you would do is, you would first go ahead and indicate that your intent is to accept the offer, and then introduce Resolution 2018 dash 24, which does so. And then we would identify the reasons for that, as well as any conditions.
Okay.
Is there agreeable to what we...
Have a motion and a second to accept the offer of $35,000 with one contingency, that being that if Keith would ever want to sell the property, that the city would get first right of refusal at the price of $35,000. There's no other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Keith. You got us a deal. Okay, so now, having said that, I would look for a motion to introduce Resolution 2018 dash 24.
I'll make a motion to...
By short title only.
Place ordinance 2018 dash 24 on its first reading by short title only.
It only have one reading.
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, resolution. Okay. Then I'll make a motion, rescind what I just said.
Yeah.
Make a motion to introduce Resolution 2018 dash 24 by short title only.
Well said.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to introduce Resolution 2018 dash 24 by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim, take it away.
Resolution 2018 dash 24, short title resolution of the county council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which accepts and approves an offer to purchase certain surplus real estate owned by the city for a amount which is less than 90 percent of the average of two appraisals. The reasons for that is that there were no objections at the public hearing to the sale at the price offered. Hoosier Pattern has been a good corporate citizen. The land has remained vacant with only one bid received over the last 10 years. Desire to see the property, the city has a desire to see the property redeveloped, and the sale of the property would relieve the city from further liability and responsibility. The conditions to the offer would be that if the property were subsequently offered for sale, the city would have first right of refusal to repurchase the property at the price sold to Hoosier Pattern. I have a condition in here that just says that Keith would need to agree to that by the end of December, December 28th, so...
Same price.
Pardon? Yeah, the same price.
Is it in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay? I'm sorry, and one other thing, it does authorize the mayor then to execute any documents necessary to give effect to the resolution. And obviously, that means that we would then subsequently enter into a purchase agreement between Hoosier Pattern and the city. And then that would allow us to go forward with getting a survey done, getting title insurance done, and moving towards closing then.
I'll make a motion then to pass Resolution 2018 dash 24.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of Resolution 2018 dash 24. Is there any discussion first? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 2018 dash 24 has been passed. So, congratulations, Keith.
Thank you.
Tim, we have anything else on this, or can we go ahead and move on?
You can move on.
Okay. Lenny? Is there someone you'd like to introduce this evening? Does he have his speech all prepared, Lenny? No.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Hey, Phil.
I just wanted to introduce Council our new police officer. This is Dan McGill. Dan McGill is a local resident, graduated in Belmont two thousand eight, did about six years in the U.S. Army, previously worked for Stealth International with Bill Wayne, and now he's a full-time police officer. I brought Sergeant Kevin Gerber, he'll be his FTO, so I just wanted to have Council basically just introduce Dan to you, so, he's in training right now. I just got word today that there's a seventy-five percent chance that he might be going to the academy in February. We're still waiting, and if we get confirmation, he'll go to the academy in February for fifteen glorious weeks, and then he'll be back, he'll be back on the road just for a short time at FTO. So, until then, Kevin's training, I can have Kevin explain it's...
FTO?
He has no, he has no law enforcement experience.
FTO stands for?
What that?
FTO stands for...
Field Training Officer.
Okay.
He's not a reserve or anything like that, so he's, he's, does have the army training, but, you know, sometimes military and law enforcement's a little bit different, but I'll explain, Kevin will explain to you what kind of training he's gonna be going through here in the coming months. I spent a lot of time making fun of him.
Just gotta grow up, man.
Yep, we started off with the very basics, teaching him how the address and system works, Syndicator Madison, First Street of the Center, and it works out from there, a hundred blocks worth. Last night, we were driving around and explaining like Adams, Monroe, what was some of the other ones, Dan? Jefferson, Jackson, Madison, Madison. A way to remember that is they're all political figures from the, from history. Two other things we, he's, he's very observant. We've been looking for some, we've been looking for a couple of specific vehicles that some of our detectives have been looking for, and he actually found one last night with me, since his eyes have been solid, not mine, and he's, he's very, very observant, which is a very good characteristic that they have. Asked lots of good questions, and, I mean, he's only been around a week, he's asked a lot of good questions, and he's on his way, he'll make a final answer. Right now, he's, he's basically almost in plain clothes, he can't be fully uniform until either one, he completes the pre-basic course, which is forty hours. If he does not go to the academy, then we'll host a forty-hour pre-basic training course, and that way he can start being full of uniform. He does have those uniforms now, but because of state law, I can't get him in there yet. However, if he does get to the academy in February, then there's no need to send him to pre-basic, he'll go right to the academy and he'll come right out. Like Kevin said, he passed everything to get to this pinnacle point here. Only thing I was kind of concerned about, that he's a Bears fan, but other than that...
Oh, gosh.
Right there.
Let's just, let's just hope he's not a Cubs fan, too.
Yeah, there's, what are you talking about?
But I just wanted to introduce some, because next week, we're getting our nineteenth guy on finally, and then also we'll be putting a new reserve on, so, making some progress with that.
So, as for, as for going to the academy in February, it's a seventy-five percent chance, that's up to what you hear back from the academy when they accept it?
Correct. A lot of times, we're on the waiting list, a lot of times, it's not unusual that higher reads back out the same for me, so, but departments ahead of time, they put a placement for him. So, if we do get that slot, then Tim and the new officer will go in February. If not, they'll go in sometime in June.
You intend, you intend to try to have them both go same time?
Yeah, because the other officer that we, that's who gets sworn in, he doesn't have no reserve experience. He works at Zerker Tire, but he's very, he's a good candidate, too, so, that's my mind.
Well, and having two go at the same time in carpool down and...
Correct. It seems to work out very well because Dan and Luke went down together.
Right.
They compete off each other, you know, ride down together.
Sure.
So, it's kind of like a buddy system.
Cry together.
Yeah.
All right, hey, Dan, welcome to the police force. We got a great group of young aggressive officers and proud to have you aboard.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Lenny, you mentioned the reserve. Do you have any on the reserve yet, or is this the first one?
We only have, we only have John Summers, and we did have Nick Engel, but Nick Engel was only on for a short period of time because he got hired full-time by the Sheriff's Department. So, we do have another one coming from Geneva, who gets sworn in next week, he's got two years' experience. We do have four right now who are still in training, I'm looking to get them sworn in sometime early next year.
So, what, in a month or so, you could have, what, five?
Potentially, uh, five, yes.
Okay, very good, well done. Thanks, Lenny.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is an ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two, which we did the first two readings on a month ago, and then we tabled it at our last meeting. It is in reference to the rezoning of the vast majority of the Cottonwood Estates property on Thirteenth Street. Is there any discussion before we take a motion on what to do?
Is there any more cleanup?
Yeah, I can kind of give you an update. They were in there a week ago with a excavator, and they were removing debris, excuse me, they were not removing debris, they were demolishing trailers, but they weren't removing anything, and I've had conversation with Nick Cost today, and supposedly tomorrow, the operator of the excavator will be back, plus there'll be trucks there to haul the debris out. He's committed to having this thing cleaned up by the end of the year so that he can have his closing with Josh Heck. So, I went by there today, and I saw a surveyor in there doing survey work, so, I think he, I think he's, he's moving in the right direction finally, so, it'd be a great thing to celebrate a new year's.
Yeah. I'll make a motion then to place ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two on its third reading by short title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two in its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two, short title, ordinance amending chapter one fifty of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of two thousand fifteen as amended for the purpose of rezoning real property.
Make a motion to pass ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two on its third reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two on its third reading. Phyllis, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Kim Colly.
Yes.
Chris Koushaw.
Yes.
Matt Doherty.
Yes.
Tyler Vaughn-Camp.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes. Ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two has been adopted. Thank you.
Good job, Wiley.
Um, next thing up is some year-end transfers and encumbrances that Phyllis will go over with all of us.
Tim, did you use Resolution twenty-five already, though, for something else? Or not?
I think...
I thought you called Wendy today for some.
Did you call Wendy for a resolution number today?
Yeah, but that was on, that was one that we just did for...
Okay, okay. This would be for Resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-five, and it's authorized into transfer funds within the budget. It's not new money, it's just transferring from one account to the other. For the police department, it's transferring fifteen hundred from professional services to operating supplies, five hundred from professional services to communication and transportation, five hundred from professional services to printing and advertising, a thousand from repairs and maintenance to operating supplies, for fire department, a thousand dollars from buildings to repairs and maintenance, for building and planning, seven hundred and seventy-five from unsafe buildings to operating supplies, fifteen thousand five hundred from unsafe buildings for professional services, and sanitation, forty dollars from operating supplies to office supplies, sixteen hundred from repairs and maintenance to communication and transportation, eleven thousand eight hundred from machinery, equipment to other services and charges, two thousand two fifty from operating supplies to other services and charges, park and rec, seven thousand four hundred from operating supplies to utility services, three thousand three hundred from repairs and maintenance supplies to repairs and maintenance, MVH Street, one thousand three hundred and fifty from repairs and maintenance supplies to communication and transportation, two thousand four hundred for repairs and maintenance to rentals, local lawn, continuing ed, five hundred and thirty-five dollars from communication and transportation to other services and charges, and redevelopment commission, a hundred dollars from professional services to printing and advertising.
Okay. Are you ready for a motion? Will be, just a minute. Everything that, that we had set aside for two thousand eighteen and the capital improvements, all that's protected, that, anything that we didn't use, like, for example, the two hundred and fifty thousand for Hannon Nutman, all that's been, being protected for new insurance.
That would be with the encumberment, which I'll talk about here.
Okay, these are just transfers.
These are just transfers, yeah.
I'm sorry. Now, look for a motion.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to introduce Resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-five by short title only.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Get the resolution.
This is transfer...
Yep.
Resolution number two, two thousand eighteen dash twenty-five, short title, resolution authorized in the transfer of funds.
Make a motion to pass Resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-five.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of Resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Got our transfers taken care of for your years in. Now, encumbrances?
I'll paper. Okay, the encumbrances I'm requesting to transfer, these are monies that we've either have a contract or we have a quote or an invoice for that we didn't get the project done, and we need to forward the money over to the New Year for City Hall project. Baker and Sons Plumbing, Heating and Supply, it's the plumbing for the second floor for remodeling for the City Hall building, twelve thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. Felger Heart for the HVAC for the second floor remodeling, twenty-three thousand five forty-eight seventy-five. Corson's Fire and Security System for upstairs, nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, actually, it's for the entire City Hall. So, the total City Hall budget to transfer from this year to next year is forty-six thousand four hundred and forty twenty-five. For the police department budget, Breitmans for a one full-time police officer, uniform and duty equipment, two thousand five twenty-seven thirty-one. Breitmans for one police reserve, uniform and duty equipment, one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five forty-six, a total of four thousand four fifty-two seventy-seven for the police department. For the fire department, Van Works Fire Equipment, an attic ladder for the fire truck, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-five cents. Common council budget, Rourke Electric, council approved, new streetlight poles and light fixtures, but they didn't get the project done yet, so they will get billed next year. There's two thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars on a four thirty-six account and ten thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars on a four four three account, a total of thirty-one thousand two hundred and four. Total for the general fund is eighty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-eight ninety-seven. For the MVH Street Fund, Five Points Improvement Project to American Structure Point for forty-three thousand two hundred and forty. W. H. Jones Truck Buy-in Equipment for a Dump Bed, seven thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars, the total for the street department is fifty thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars. Lowet Public Safety, three police vehicles to Tom Kelly Ford for a hundred thousand six hundred and forty-six. Rainy Day Fund for the MKM Architect and Design for the Decatur Art Gallery, a hundred and ninety-six thousand fifty-two dollars and fifty cents, a total of four hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and forty-seven cents. So, I hope I didn't forget anything in all those projects, but I do want to request, Melissa's working on the facade, there was one facade, this is out of the seat at fund since it's on an appropriated account, I just need council approval to forward the money over. It's fifteen thousand for Mr. Planners and nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-six for Small Town Bar and Grill, so that would be in the seat at fund.
Okay. So, those would be two separate, or is that all combined?
This would be separate approval, and the encumbrances are actually appropriated accounts I need to transfer over, because that goes to the state to get, I mean, to DLGS, so I need that proof of that.
Okay.
Any questions? Did I miss anything? Do you guys remember any projects that I missed?
Melissa's got it.
The five thousand dollars for our HPI match. Yeah, and I'll just, I'll just carry that forward, if I could have approval to go ahead and carry that forward. We're not sure where we're gonna pay that from, I'll probably want to be one of the funds, it's not that much to carry over, but thanks for mentioning that, Melissa. That's the city portion.
Phyllis, the encumbrance of funds is not in the form of a resolution, it's just something that has to be approved by council.
Has been part of the minutes.
Last year, we satisfied money to do the upstairs renovations.
And she's got a little bit of that was in the transfers, I think, or in the encumbrances?
No, it's for Baker, for Baker Plumbing, Felger Heart, Corson's.
Right, but it's not, it's not done, but if we set all the money aside to complete it, and now that money not gonna be available to complete it, I guess is my question.
Um, the only thing that's, the only thing that's outstanding, the invoices that I have are those. Carpet needs to be done yet, but for, we've had a hundred thousand already budgeted in next year's budget, so we'll just pay it on the next year's budget.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
Yeah. And, and all the other projects have been done up there, I think we're complete with them.
And this encumbered amount is that that we had marked?
Correct.
Well, I'm saying we didn't probably use all that we had set aside, so it's gonna go back to the general fund that we budgeted for.
Correct, yep.
And that's the same as what, what happens with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we set aside for Hannon Nutman, whatever goes back to general fund, then you just re-appropriate it, or how do you?
Um, Hannon Nutman is in seat at, and that's already budgeted in there.
Okay.
For next year.
And what about the two thousand eighteen's portion that we had set aside?
I think we just doubled it, didn't we? We budgeted five hundred thousand.
Okay.
So, we had two hundred and fifty budgeted for this year, and we budgeted in nineteen five hundred thousand. So, there's nothing really to carry forward, because we don't have a contract, and we don't have an invoice or a quote, so we just keep adding money into that.
Okay, all right.
Into that budget.
So, you just in turn, you just double up the budget, like, so, if that was to happen next year, then you could add...
Double up the budget again.
It's like a savings account.
Right.
But then in turn...
It's just being marked for that.
Yeah, if you, you can't encumber it unless it's been specifically planned.
Unless you have, right, unless you have a contract or an invoice. It's already tagged.
Otherwise, you have to use it.
Yeah, if we've done, if we had not planned for that in the budget, then it would, not necessarily on the seat at side, but the other monies would go to the general fund. It would be in the general fund, but it wouldn't specifically be earmarked for, for a project.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the encumbrances that, that was presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second for approval of the encumbrances presented by Phyllis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, then we need to make a motion to approve the facade. How do I want to say that?
Just to carry over.
Carry over. Carry over that, that Phyllis presented.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Is there anything else, Phyllis?
What about the five thousand?
What was that for?
I'll just make a note of that, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and that's all you have for this? Do you have anything else, Phyllis, for tonight? Okay. Cam, did you want to talk about what you have found with the Arts Council a little bit this evening?
Sure. I took this out earlier, I got copies for everybody. We talked about the idea of the Public Arts Commission, Public Art Project, and I promised you kind of a who, what, where, when, why, how concept, that's all it is, is a concept. And a lot of it's modeled off of what our neighbors in the north have done, or have. But, just the idea of establishing a public art program with our commission, obviously, I think the ideal time would be next year and leading up into the second street law, there's multiple reasons why, certainly the good work that has been going on in our community, the appreciation of that, and kind of putting some teeth behind it officially, so, but also the second street law and the public art engagement, what I'm calling it for lack of a better term, a public art engagement center below, that's going to be, you know, essentially city property, the L lease, but in anticipation of further public art development and the need for long-term sustainment through planning, programming, and funding. A lot of communities throughout Indiana have done this, Jasper, Indiana was the first one, first community, I think it was nineteen seventy-six, seventy-three or seventy-six. But actually having a form of, a portion of the government that is, you know, through a commission, that is established for the development, the maintenance, and advocacy of public art, really. So, if you look at some of the different things, I know this came up earlier, way early on, six, seven years ago, with Sculpture Tour with, really as a purchase of the first piece, was kind of who owns it? Who does it belong to, who's insurance? As it is right now, I think we're paying about a thousand dollars a year to ensure a lot of these pieces of art, which, one would question who actually owns this stuff, right? So, part of that is developing an official entity that could not only take ownership but also maintain it, and also go after some additional funding that really we cannot at the community or the city. But the idea, and you look at public art commissions throughout the county or to the state, that they are putting in their budget, they're putting money aside for, specifically for public art programs, right? So, same kind of stuff, how they do that could be, there's multiple ways to do it. I think setting up is part of your general budget is an option, but tying to some form of economic development seems to be how bigger cities are doing it now. Indianapolis in particular is called the one percent, they do it through TIP revenue, but basically any economic incentive the developer has that they get from the city, they're required to give the same amount back, one percent of that amount back specifically earmarked for public art. Now, in our size and where our TIP is right now, I don't know that that would be all that effective, but we have another tool which would be our CEDIT, you know, and I think it's a matter of do we earmark a percentage of that. So, we realize that changes, you can have a set amount from a budget perspective, and you could have, that's a fixed amount, you can have a variable amount that's tied to a percentage of CEDIT. But the idea being that we would be providing seed money to this commission, just like we do other commissions, private rebuilding commission started off, but then that entity would have the ability to go out and seek other funding, right? Or if they wanted to hire somebody, if they get to that point, help manage public art programs, they could do that. But are we providing, now, we don't, we provide money every year, some years it's more than others, it's kind of as requested to support different initiatives, but the idea being that, you know, unfortunately, we're put in a position in City Council where we're having to decide what kind of art we're going to support, right? What do we see as that, and I don't think that's really, I think we say we value it, it's a part of our long-term strategic plan, and we're putting money towards it. But we, that's all to be determined, but then, you know, how is it, who runs it, I mean, a lot like, like a lot of our commissions, we have council appointed positions, we have the mayor appointed positions, we have, you know, redevelopment commission certainly has representatives from the school, corporation, the school board, so that's how, you know, if I look at Fort Wayne, and I give you, where was it, on the back page of this, there's actually a link to Fort Wayne ordinance, and they, they have a much larger, they have thirteen members, but it's like, you know, Art United, Art Link, a lot of different organizations that they have, they have members appointed by City Council, members appointed by the mayor, and then.
Purdue Fort Wayne has a.
Purdue Fort Wayne, St. Francis, they all have representatives, and it basically says their chairman, their executive director, or somebody that they appoint. But then, that organization themselves selects two arts to be a part of that as well. Now, do we need thirteen members? Probably not, but what's the right number? And can we have, make sure we have representative, representation from the existing groups in our community that are supporting the art, certainly, hump to mine, art, both times art camp, Sculpture Tour, they're really operating under North Downs Arts, at least using the 501(c)(3) status, but then you have Cultural Connection, I think those are kind of the main groups, but I think it's important that we include the schools as well, and the art teachers, and maybe, and as Fort Wayne said, they have multiple members that are non-voting members, but they're participants, so we can structure this anyway, but the idea is we're providing a core group to help make the decisions, protect the investment that's already been made in our community of public art, but also spur it on. On the backside, I've given you some, these are just examples of what they could do, right? You know, is this specifically a public arts commission, you know, how do you define public arts? Is that really artwork that we're seeing, or is that programming, is that art programming? Does that kind of incorporate what's on the lower level of the law, the responsibility of the arts commission to run these programs? I know that Biggs is also looking for, who establishes the criteria, the selection criteria for the artists of the law, or the law's potential, right? So, should it be any one group, or should it be a group that has been, has equal representation, and that could be a great way that we can help them out as well? That's why I think time is of the essence, to kind of keep the things forward, and even from this, we start drafting perhaps the ordinance that would go into effect maybe next year. That's just the thought.
I think this is a very good, solid concept that you've got here, and provides a good framework for us to move forward with, because I do believe, I totally agree with you, we need this type of organization in place.
Some other things around there, you know, we talked about murals, and I know our current ordinance also requires if you're going to have a painting on your building, it has to have, I think, planning, planning is important, but I'm not sure, but.
Probably planning.
Yeah, so, who should it, right?
Yeah, yeah, this actually makes more sense, but.
I don't understand it, but.
And I totally agree with you as far as, you know, we've had, every year, they come to City Council requesting for financial support, which we want to support them, but yet we're also put in a position to kind of be the judge or clearinghouse.
Right.
Of art pieces, that's not our position.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, this provides, this gives us an opportunity, I think, to even be, maybe give a little more substantially to these programs from an economic development standpoint, but we can put stipulations on there, and I think Fort Wayne does a great job of explaining what the responsibility to report back, you know, especially if we're going to continue to get budgeted money, how is it to be spent, does it need to be equally shared among groups or for certain things?
Yeah.
All stipulations we can put in there.
So, I think we need to move forward and start putting it into a resolution, and you, I did quickly read through the Fort Wayne's plan, and I think it's a good example for us to follow or pattern.
Yeah, I read it earlier today, too. First of all, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to do this, it's an excellent path, in my opinion, to follow for control, so it takes us out of the loop of making decisions on art. I'm just, thank you.
Sure.
It's a great path.
But also says we're all in as a city in support of these efforts.
Yeah.
I agree.
Just picking and choosing.
Permanently.
Correct, yes.
Do you have an opinion?
Yeah, I think it needs to start moving forward, we have a lot of stuff in the pipeline that I just don't think, like, the city running this lower level down here is what the city needs to be in doing. And, I mean, we kind of went all in when we started this arts law project, and it's something's got, somebody's got to control it, otherwise it can get spread out and on train tracks.
Correct.
And, you know, maybe I didn't really, wasn't very clear about this, but I think another great reason for this, it's going to go a long way towards attracting the serious artists, if they know that we, hey, this community is serious, they have a public arts program, they have a public arts mission, they have multiple public art, you know, thing, opportunities.
Right.
This is not, this is, yes, I have a great opportunity for, you know, housing, but there's a better opportunity to build my resume.
Correct, yes, yeah. And it does state that the city of Decatur is behind the arts, and gets us on solid footing.
So, going forward, I think maybe what we want to do, or I might make a suggestion anyhow, just more research, I can step in and maybe help you also, maybe contact a couple of other cities of similar size to us, like I think Wabash has an Arts Council, maybe Columbia City, and see, you know, how big their board is, who represents it, maybe kind of compare this with the outline that you have, and you and I can talk, and maybe we, between you and I, we can kind of come back after the first of the year with somewhat of a proposal, and then move forward early in the year. Does that sound like a plan?
Sounds good to me. I didn't get into that depth of it, but do they make their own 501(c)(3) with the arts?
I did not see that.
I didn't see that on that.
Do you, Melissa, I know you went to a meeting about this, they talk about a need to have their own.
Not-for-profit.
Most grants that are directed to the arts say that they are eligible for a 501(c)(3) or a local or state government entity, so how can the arts commission operate under the city of Decatur's umbrella would be appropriate?
Okay, good.
Just wondered, I mean, if you've got one with Main Street, I didn't know if we needed to supply for other.
Well, the two, I mean, Arts Council has one in Soda.
The only thing, if you can get.
Cultural Connection has one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Two of the groups, key groups.
I'd like to look at.
Thanks again, I thought that was cool.
Yeah, it's a great step in the right direction.
I'd just like to see how.
Okay. Okay, so by consensus, that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Yeah, and I put a little more room on this, we'll move on. All right, that is all that I have on my agenda. Phyllis, do you have some things for council? I figured you did.
We have to do our annual certification of elected officials, that we are compliant with the nepotism policy, that we're not hiring anyone that's direct line of supervision, and also, we're not contracting with anyone that's a relative. So, I just need to, I think we can't hear the element, needs to sign it, everybody else, we just need to make this a matter of record, we've all signed off on it.
I'll make a motion to make this a matter of record. Second. Have a motion and a second to make the nepotism policy for City Council members a matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And then the other thing is, anybody that is an employee that does work for the city, they have to fill out a disclosure statement.
Conflict of interest.
Yep, so, Tim, I need to, fingers. So, Jim Hitchcock works, is Assistant Fire Chief, he does work for the city, Jeff Sheetz, which is Fire Captain, Tim Baker for his law firm, James Corey Ham for the K-9 Officer, Tony Stimson, volunteer fireman, Leo Feesal III for volunteer firemen, Taylor Gage, who is fireman, and Tyler, council member, and Don Bergdahl, Civil and Infrastructure Manager, and Greg Kitson for the Plan Commission BCA. And I think that's it, we just need to make these a matter of record, these will be submitted then on with State Board of Accounts.
So, we'll make it a matter of record.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion and a second, make this a matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, anything else?
Melissa wants to report, do you want, were you going to report on the diesel spill? Remembers, or you want me to?
This is on the.
McClure's.
Okay, oh, McClure.
McClure's had that diesel fuel spill back in July eighteen.
It was actually February.
Oh, was it February?
Yeah.
Okay, I think your invoice is July.
Well, we give them.
Was it February, though?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. They did reimburse this five thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars, so I just wanted to report that we did get reimbursed from them for that spill.
Okay, thank you.
Is that?
Tim, you got some things?
I do.
I do, you would.
I know. This is something that came up this morning at the Salways District meeting, but we have the city contract with Salways District for the upcoming year. It's the same terms and conditions as we've had for many years with the Salways District. The only change that was made was the cost per ton that the city will pay in two thousand nineteen. It went up ninety-six cents per ton, so the price that will be paid starting January one is forty-four dollars and eighty-two cents per ton. That increase is tied to the CPIU for the twelve-month period ending November of two thousand eighteen.
CPIU.
Consumer Price Index for Urban Service, Urban Setting, and it was a two-point-two percent increase. That's the same escalator clause that we use in our hauling and landfill contracts with Luganville and with Waste Management out of J. County. So, a couple of years ago, the Salways District Board approved a resolution that also ties increases to the municipal contracts and to the gate fees at the gate, to that same escalator clause, because what had happened was, the, about three years, four years ago, the city was faced with a pretty significant bump in the rate, and it was because the rate had been held steady for about eight years with no increases, and the spread from the true cost of disposal and what the city was paying was getting way out of line. So, what was done is, initially it was proposed that it would be a six-dollar a ton increase, and that was a pretty big hit to the city, so instead of doing that in one year, they spread that over two years, a three-dollar increase, a three-dollar increase, and after the second year, from that point on, the rates would go up incrementally based on the CPIU, so that you don't have these big hits in any one year, and it gives you the ability to kind of absorb that cost a little easier. The impact here is that this will probably cost the city about three thousand dollars more next year than it did this year if you dispose the same volume of waste, okay? So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the transfer station contract for two thousand nineteen.
Before we get to that, though.
Yes.
The contract that the county has for the hauling and with Waste Management will be renegotiated in two thousand nineteen, and will then take effect a couple of years after that, correct?
No.
A year or two after that?
The current contract that we have expires at the end of two thousand twenty-two. I was thinking it was twenty-one, but apparently it's twenty-two. So, what happens is, when we entered into a contract with Waste Management that operates J. County. operates Jay County landfill, we entered into a 10-year contract with an option to renew for 10-year. We're in that option to renew period, and we've got about four years left on that contract. When we get to that point, you're going to see a big increase in the rates. Unless we have-
Competition.
Competition. Because the rates that we're currently paying to Waste Management is far less than the gate rate if you just didn't have a contract with them to begin with.
But that comment this morning made, although it's way too soon to note, but saying Republic has kind of expressed some interest.
Right.
Gives us a little hope.
The advantage that we have is, Republic operates the old National Serval landfill up in Allen County. And because of our proximity to that, they apparently have expressed interest in accepting our waste there. So, if you, if you have two landfills reasonably close by that has available airspace and they want your waste, that would be a good situation because it'll, it'll cause them to sharpen their pencils.
Right.
If we only have one that's interested, then we'll kind of have their mercy. Because the alternative is to find a landfill someplace else, which is going to be a heck of a lot farther away, and now all of a sudden, you might get a lower landfill rate, but your transportation or hauling expense to get it there goes way up. So, we're kind of juggling two balls here, both in terms of the hauling cost and the landfill cost. The best scenario for the city is that when we get to the point of rebidding this contract through the Salways District, that we've got more than one landfill that wants our waste. And there has been some talk of a third company that, maybe even a fourth, one's over in Ohio, that a couple of years ago expressed some interest. And I think there was a, another individual that was in the waste industry, sold out, and now is trying to get back in because they're beyond the non-compete agreement, and is looking to possibly side a landfill. So, if those are all close by, then that helps.
So, would be no issue of crossing state line, or do we not?
Um, Ohio, we'd have to check with Ohio, but I think any issues there would be with the landfill operator, not so much us.
Okay. And what we're taking over to the-
Yeah, they, I mean, we, we would probably be a little more, there would probably be a little more, do more inspecting in terms of the materials that were being delivered because it's coming from outer state.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, long and short of it is, I need to get the transfer station contract approved for 2019.
So, moved. A motion and a second to renew, to approve the transfer station contract for 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay. And if you would, just have the two signature or two copies to sign.
So, the good news is, is that we will not have to have any kind of an increase on our trash disposal, at least anytime in the next year or two, looking down the road for a few years.
And it's a good time to continue to remind people that the more all of us recycle, the less we're throwing away.
Mm-hmm.
And the city has been doing a good job of late with social media promoting that.
Twelve days of-
So, we applaud that.
Of recycling. Thank you. Tim, you have some other things?
Yeah, I do. This is a housekeeping matter on my part, but I do represent the district, I do represent the city. And in order to do that, I have to get consent proof from both the city and the district to allow that. So, I would ask that you consent to that.
So, moved.
Kind of coming hat in hand here.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And if you would, please sign in the "aye" column.
This is for you to represent, Phyllis.
Us and the district, right. The next thing that I have is, if you would, we need to schedule a public hearing. New Beginning Space Center, Inc. bought the GE parking lot. The, it's called New Beginning Space Center, Inc. But, the, there's a request that has been made to vacate platted lots, as well as vacate streets and alleys in the GE parking lot. The vacation of platted lots goes before the planning commission. Planning commission will hold a public hearing on that request, January 15. I spoke with Phyllis, and Phyllis in turn spoke with Adam Miller.
Yeah, but Jerry said, "I can't with you."
No?
We may need to change that. He wants to change it, but I was waiting for Adam to respond back to me, whether he's acceptable to that.
Okay.
Jerry wanted it not until-
He wants it later? Oh, well.
March.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well-
So, I was waiting for, thinking of that, because I said, "Well, Jerry, I think Adam can represent you, you don't need to be here." But I, I don't know. He wants to be here.
He was in a hurry a month ago.
Yeah. Well, okay, so-
He'll get to town in January.
Okay. Well, it may be helpful to have him here, just because he may need, he may need to answer questions about what's going on.
Yeah, because he's the head of the church or something.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
I was just waiting.
Well, here's the thing. What I would ask is, we go ahead and schedule it for January 15, unless we're, unless they request it to late.
Definitely.
Okay? The reason for that is, technically, the public hearing before council to vacate streets and alleys is to be held within 30 days of the filing of the petition. The petition was filed on November 26, so we're all, we're already not going to hit that with January 15. And we had contacted Adam to make sure that he was willing to waive that requirement, and he indicated he would. So, we'll go ahead and set it for the 15, but if Jerry wants it delayed to a later date, then we'll schedule it at the next meeting for a later time.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So, there'd be a motion to do that at this point.
So, moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay. And I think that's everything that I have.
You better have the rest of these guys sign that.
Oh, yeah, I will. But that's everything that I have.
Okay. Department heads. Lenny. Les.
Well, Phyllis mentioned the reimbursement from the tour on that spill. Still waiting on Buckeye. And rumor has it that never had a slow day. Two years waiting. I will have to say that it's the initial things that we immediately used, were really good about, we've got those replaced, but compensation for the overtime and so on, they're, they're just-
We'll be waiting a while.
So, yeah, they're a little slow. Jim had, Jim Hitchcock had surgery on Monday from the incident involving a county squad car, and he had to have a rotator cut, and detached a muscle from his shoulder. So, he had surgery Monday, he's recovering well, as well medicated as he can at home. He's not going to be working for a while. But, you know, he is, we do wish him well. He is, he is, he did get home Monday afternoon, he is recovering it. So, safe days, it is a few days, but probably living at about three months without his services as assistant chief. And I'd just like to offer a Merry Christmas and happy holidays to the mayor, council, and board treasurer's office, and appreciate everything that you guys do throughout the year, and for the support that you give the fire department with that. Merry Christmas. Wish you all the best.
Thanks, Les. Bill?
Awesome.
Don? Kevin?
There are a lot of conferences here, a lot more section here.
Yep, thank you. You well said. Carrie? Jeremy?
I'd like to have a second.
Bill? Melissa? Okay. Um, I wanted to just recognize somebody this evening. Bill Carpenter sitting back here in the middle, I want to recognize his father, who passed away here this past week. His dad, Wayne Carpenter, was superintendent of the water department for 25 years, and city engineer, along with that, for the same amount of time. And he passed away at the age of 92.
92.
So, I just want to pay our respects to Wayne Carpenter, and Bill, and your family, so.
Good work.
Yep, 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 yep. I will second what Kevin said, inasmuch as this being year-end, it's been a great year. I mean, we have had a lot of good things this year, from the plaza to construction. If Kurt was here, he would be shaking his head, "Yes." And I, I can't imagine what our total will be this year when we total up the building permit, with the valuation of all the projects that was built, with Woodcrest, and the school project, and all the new construction out along 13th Street. It's just been a really great year construction-wise. So, let's wish for a, and hope for a great 2019, and keep the momentum going. With that, one last thing I want to say is, that the city and the Chamber of Commerce has jointly come together. We have purchased two tickets to see Paul McCartney at the Allen County War Memorial Coliseum on Monday, June 3. And we are having a raffle to give those tickets away. So, if anyone is interested in tickets, let me know. I have tickets available. Tickets are $10 apiece, or three for $20. We will be giving the tickets away on May 4 at the opening day of the North Adams Baseball's opening day ceremonies. And the concert is Monday, June 3. So, if seeing Paul McCartney is on your bucket list, you might want to buy a whole bunch of these tickets.
How many, how many tickets are there?
Well, it's endless. We'll sell all we can.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and that is all, all to go toward the Han and Upman project, so, all the proceeds. So, that's all I have. Council members. Wiley.
Wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Same here. One thing I would like to say is, thanks to Phyllis, this, we went through the state board of accounts today. I'm very proud of you, Phyllis, for taking care of our city business, and thanks once again.
You did a good job.
She got us through the audit.
That was a four-year audit.
It's a four-year audit. Yeah, yep.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Merry Christmas. Cameron.
Merry Christmas.
Matt.
Merry Christmas. Looking forward to the New Year as well.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments?
Motion to pay the claims.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pay the claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and two seconds to adjourn. All in favor?